All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Michau and Mr. Ross, I see first, so you wanna start off, gentlemen, please, and this is Carlos as well, so Mr. Ross, please.
Good evening, my name is David Ross, I teach at Smith School and at Wagner School, and we're here tonight to honor and to recognize the jazz bands and show choirs of our district, representing our school, who've had a very successful year, as we did last year, we had a great year last year, and we wanted to be able to present to you our students so far. First of all, hang up, any show choir students from Wagner? So amazingly, tonight, we also have a double play at our school going on, it's a rehearsal for their parents, and so a lot of them are involved with that, and in addition to this, but, so highlights for this year is that we added sixth grade, Reed Brook had done it for a year or two previous, and we decided to kind of be comparable to that, added sixth grade, and we have approximately thirty-four students in show choir this year, and we are, again, with Division One, which is the big division, had competition just recently, and we're blessed to have a gold award presented to our group for getting a superior rating, and also John here, in our Wagner shirt, got an outstanding musicianship award for his solo in our show, so. We're going over the math about two days before competition, and saying, we'll just say there's thirty in the group, and there's more than that, and I said, I think we've all put about a hundred hours into it, each, I said, that's about three thousand hours, so if you're a full-time employee, that would give you a year and a half worth of work, so, for fifteen minutes of music, so it's pretty impressive, so, I commend them for doing a tremendous job all year, and the commitment that they do, we're not done yet, we have started like four or five years ago, doing what we call our East Coast Tour, and we go down to Smith School in the morning, and we pick two other area schools to go to, just to share our music, and give us an opportunity to perform along with our jazz band, and we'll also do our show at our June first concert, which of course, you're welcome to attend, if you'd like to at Wagner, the Wagner Show Choir. I think Heidi, you're up next, thank you very much.
Reed Brook Show Choir. So we'll bring out the Reed Brook Show Choir first. Stand right in front of you, you've got the hardware with you. Right, so Matt Lidduar and I directed this year, Matt stood at the helm, and I sat behind the piano most of the time, and this group actually placed third in their division, as well as a gold award, so if he's hold, they're holding the hardware here, the great thing, there's actually forty-five students in this group that meet twice a week at seven AM. We tell them it's not for the hardware, it's for the love of performing, but I think they have fun bringing home a little hardware, too, so, we're very, very proud of these students, they did a great job, they represented it, they represented our school very well, so Reed Brook Show Choir. Hammond Academy. They created and paid for their own t-shirts this year, so some of them are wearing their t-shirts tonight, you guys don't have to be in a long line, you come in groups, goodbye. At the high school festival on Saturday, they competed in the afternoon, they received a gold award, and at that time, two of our soloists were awarded outstanding soloist awards, so they get two of the four outstanding soloist awards for their category, Ethan Cassavant is one, who played "Hyde." I do not see our other one today, but she is in a play in Waterville, so she is probably there, or messing up from that, but Michaela Burnridge also won an outstanding musicianship award. At the high school festival, the top two groups have to go on and perform again, and wipe the scores clean, and start again, and this group did an even more amazing performance, and placed second in the space, very good. All together with the three show choirs, over a hundred students are out singing, dancing, and performing, and I can't say enough about the skills that they learn in show choir, that carry them through their adult lives, so many times, it's the, it's learning how to perform through nerves, how to speak in front of an audience, is just like singing in front of an audience, well, maybe singing in front of an audience is a little easier, however, however, they've learned skills that they'll take with them forever, they were ladies and gentlemen, they cheered for the winners, they basked in the glory while they were very, showed much humility, so I'm very, very proud of them, they got, they got back here at one forty-five on Sunday morning, unloaded, put everything away, and then went home, so you can see this group perform again on May twelfth at our cabaret here, or on May twenty-third at Marsh River Theater in Brooks, so congratulations. Becky.
I have to start jazz bands?
Reed Brook Jazz Band.
Good evening, my name is Susan Howard, you can, uh, you can, yeah. Reed Brook Middle School Jazz Band, some of them. Uh, this is Bob Haskett, our jazz program at Reed Brook, we have, I do my best to make sure we have opportunities for new, the jazz students, as well as the advanced, and kind of split up the year now, we're all regressing as one new group, but, um, this is the group that played the advanced music at competition, and as you'll, I'm sorry, know, there's no shortcuts to shooting musical lessons, and they have to, it has to be done through hard work and dedication, and they have worked very hard, we've established, I guess, a reputation for having a good program, and living up to that every year, it's always a challenge, but it's not about trophies, but it's nice when we can bring them home. So we did win our third, three piece of our state championship, and the gold award, which is really what we strive for, since I guess, in our standards basis, that's necessary for getting a four, exceeding standards, so, and we also talk about threes, for the third year in a row, we have three students getting three of the five outstanding musicianship awards, so, I'm not sure, for any wrong or anything, but, so it's fantastic achievement, we have Logan Christian, and. About twelve students also solos during their performances, which is all under print prov, and it's something they have to do on the spot, which is very nerve-wracking for anyone to do, and all of our solos got superior ratings today, so that's also a huge accomplishment for them, so, yeah. Okay, um, do you wanna mention one, one, obviously, bringing trophies is great, except it's not what our job's about, it's about developing great musicians, as well as character, and I think the biggest compliment, and what I take the most pride in for them, are the compliments we receive from where we perform, we went to Old Town and played for them, and the teachers there, the parents there talked about what respectful, polite students we had, and how well they represented our school, and it was, that's worth more than a trophy to me, and also, at State Festival, the host, he could hear them, but he said, your students represented your school very well, that was an unsolicited comment, and I was very proud, that means more, I think, for all of us, they appreciate them as great citizens, amazing musicians, and obviously, in both, and watching it develop as that is, is really the most rewarding part of the job, and as a teacher, I'm most proud of them, so, thank you for having us.
You have Wagner Jazz Band come on up? So while they're coming up, I'd like to thank you at times, publicly, the educators supporting, and the people who are able to do, and want to thank the community as well, for every kid you see here, there's probably three drivers, and four drivers trying to get the double rehearsal, and we can't do what we do without that support, in so many ways, it's money, but it's time, and it's commitment, and so, you can see around the room, and I would say, you can tell me for a minute, I think that this is about only half of our kids, because the other half couldn't make it tonight, so, what you're seeing here represents about half of the amount of support that we get, and we just, I appreciate it, I know the other staff appreciates it, we can't do it without, without that, that being said, too, I also want to take an opportunity publicly to thank my colleagues that I work with, I feel we have one of the most hot-notch departments in the state, and I feel like we all bring something different to the table, and it's all good stuff, and just what, I don't think you always get that acknowledgement from us, you know, so, thank you, thank you, thank you, and that, too. And we have the jazz band, so, Wagner, we're doing both things, and, so we had a tremendous year again here, now, what Ms. Marley said is so absolutely true, many of, well, the kids you see right here in front of you, while they're in study halls, they have decided, rightly so, that homework needs to be done in study hall, so they come down and practice, so they get their homework done, they come down to my room, I have kids in my room all day, I show them in my office, I show them in the storage room, and I'm usually on the floor, so on the other side of the door. But, that's what it takes, they get it, and we have enough people doing that on a regular basis, as leaders, but they also inspire those that are coming up, and it just feeds itself, it just really feeds itself, and so, what you're looking at here represents our work for this year at this competition, again, we got the gold award like we did at, with the show choir, meaning we set a high standard, a superior rating, but in addition to that, we also took first place in our division. And one of the things we talk a lot about is just the value of hard work, and because that work, it doesn't always come instantly, like there's nothing that's instant, but maybe some of the work that you do now, you get to reward that three or four years, or ten years, or twenty-five years, you don't know, but the work is never not valued, has value, just amazing, amazing work, and it paid off, in addition to that, like the musicianship awards, which I congratulate Reed Brook and the Academy on theirs, Jared Kismen is our tenor saxophone player in our jazz band, and again, with all five awards, we were able, now we, eat at the work, Jared Kismen was awarded the musicianship award for Wagner Real School tenor saxophone. So again, thank you both to the jazz band and the show choir from Wagner, you've done a tremendous job, I know the amount of work it takes, I know, I know, and you should be very proud of your accomplishments, continue your hard work here, continue your hard work at the Academy, and I also would like to congratulate all the other groups, you represent our school so well, and we're very lucky to have you, and very proud of all of you, thank you.
RV Project first, RV Project.
Good evening, my name is Pat Michau, I'm in the theater. We've got these new people in the academy, and this first group is RV Project, it's been a couple of years ago, and we wanted to be able to give all our students and students opportunities, and some of these kids just wanna keep on performing all the time, so that's what they do, and so this is kind of designed to help the kids understand, you didn't belong at high school, and you wanna play, you wanna be a gigging musician, you wanna get out there and learn what it's all about, this is the kind of music we play, we play for events such as the fundraiser for the students' chorus, we have this on Saturday, we played for the Handing Juice Association meeting last year, we played at Bamber High School for a learning, a challenge they had a couple of years ago, oh, last year, yeah, last year, and they also went to the District Five Jazz Festival, and they got a superior rating as well, now, you wanna, why didn't we go to state, well, because we have people in this group who are also part of our jazz combo, you can't have students who participate in both, part, you know, competing the same well, so, that's why this group gets assessed, and they get assessed with exemplary marks, and they do some great things for the community as well, so it's just great to have a group like this, and teaching more of the real world stuff, so anyway, congratulations to these fine musicians. We also have our Handing Academy combo, there's a few more people, if you're not in combo, you can go back, and if you are, you can see that, some of the people there, have these kids that explore play all the time, the combo rehearsals one day after school, RV Project acting rehearsals two days before school, they rehearse after school, there's a recordist, Mr. and Lady, and he does a great job composing music, and he's back, and the arranger's got specifically bullet, he's really talented that way, and they, they perform some great jazz standards, you know, it's all about what is the standards in jazz, and this is what they do, and there's a lot of improvisation, you have, it's a great feature of that, and so they went to the district festival, and got a district, a superior rating, and then went to the state jazz festival, South Florida, and they achieved also a gold rating, so Handing Academy Jazz Company, again, is definitely what they're doing, so we want to congratulate them on.
Jazz ensemble, can we come forward, jazz ensemble?
Washington, the Washington final, and I was supposed to tell this kid, talk about chemistry, he says, you don't create chemistry, what you get, and, you know, we have, I told this kid several times this year, you have such a reunion, you have some marvelous talented people that have come together, dedicated to make great music, and it doesn't happen at this level all the time, they went to the district jazz festival, and they, from both judges, received a negative out of one hundred, and that was like, so where do we go from here, and so we made it kind of our goal, we're gonna go for a perfect score, and what they, what they grade you on is technical merit, artistic merit, improvisation, and overall presentation, progress, maybe level difficulty, all that kind of stuff, and so, we're off to the state jazz festival, and I want to say also, they're amazing ambassadors for our school, every time we go out, let's say, on the bus, down to South Florida, you'd have some shenanigans, right, nice, and we get to a restaurant, and, and just, again, exemplary representation, you get to the hotel, again, you might expect some, maybe a little bit of noise, they quiet down a bit, but that's it, and they, they do what you ask them, and just five of those people used to be, I could take them on the road, go on tour for months with them, I don't think I'd really get too sick of them, you know? And so, they're just great ambassadors for Handing Academy, not just for the material ever, but just for who they are as people, so I wanna thank them for being just great people to be with, so, off to the state jazz festival, we have the combo play Friday, we played Saturday, and we went and performed Division Two, meaning that we're not quite large enough for Division One, so Division Two, there's four divisions in the state of Maine, so, about nine bands in every division, and so we performed in the afternoon, we performed three selections, and the goal was a perfect score, this score sheet I have here is a perfect score. One guy gave us one point below, and one guy gave us two points below, so the average was a ninety-four, you might say we thought it was a hundred, well, we go to another room, and we sight, I mean, you look at something that you've never, well, you kinda hadn't seen it before, but, it's something that you prepare to get ready for, in case you have to see it for the first time, and you're gonna sight view it, so they give you a score of five out of five, so we sat down, and they recognized something, we had spent maybe four rehearsals working on sight view, and they got pretty good at it, a good not to get a perfect score at the state jazz festival, so their score at the state jazz festival was ninety-nine out of a hundred, which was the highest score in jazz ensemble of that weekend, from all the divisions throughout the state of Maine, so. As I said, this is a special defeat, you know, this doesn't happen every year, it's kind of unheard of for that to happen, and then they qualified for the night finals, they're two groups from earlier that went to the finals, and once again, we had this Division Two shape change, and. We just recognized out of five, we had Barry Giles on tenor saxophone. And Lucio Canki on drums. And also, we had several musicians beyond them that played solos, there was Jake and Bailey, there was also Noah Gardner, Nate Haven, Rita Sands, Josh Redman, A.G. Frye, and Dan Weiss, all played improvised solos, and all got superior ratings for those solos as well, so, we had a lot of depth in young talent, we had, it's part along this, and so all of them, you know, really knocked that off the park, so that's our goal, the goal is never the trophy, the goal is always to do your best, and enjoy the process of making great music, so you can keep on doing that beyond that, so, thank you, and for your great support.
On behalf of the board, Mr. Mallory, Mr. Ross, Mr. Michau, Mr. Dorr, do my best to.
Yeah, I wanna just congratulate our musicians, and certainly, the outcome of the students is in direct corollary to the performance and dedication of our faculty, so thank you very much for your time, Mr. Ross, three thousand hours of certainly, it's a part of time, so, again, thank you very much, very appreciative of that from the board. Now we have our unified basketball group, right?
Okay, Mr. Clay, you're up.
It's tough act to follow. Before you is the Handing Academy Unified Basketball team, we have had an outstanding season, winning the state championship, and the gold ball, in the first inaugural year, which is incredible. But I truly believe, just as the music teachers have shared, that more than the hardware, more than the gold ball, the lessons learned, and the journey that we have traveled together from January until this weekend, are far outweigh what our championship win was, it was pretty exciting to win, but I know that we have stories to share, some of the students, if they're willing to say a few words, but, this is, right here is a picture of our team that I just would like to present to you, saying thank you for helping us change lives, and giving us this opportunity through sports, and we appreciate that, thank you. Here, I have three letters from Oceanside, I know some of you are able to attend the Eastern Maine final game against Oceanside, this first letter is from the first game in which they played against us, they sent us a lovely letter, and then they sent us two more letters, saying thank you for the friendships that we have made, and good luck going for the gold ball, so I just like to show this to you. The leadership that you have in this building is absolutely tremendous, I should not have done this team without the help of our seniors and Mrs. McDonald, it has been an outstanding experience because of the students in the building, from Isaiah getting the buzzer beater shot in the first game, to Zach throwing up a basket, to David winning the state championship for us in the last final seconds of the game, I mean, it's just been an incredible journey, and I, if anybody is feeling comfortable enough, it's okay if you don't, if anyone wants to say a word or two about maybe the friendships that you have made, or anything like that, should you ever want to share?
Actually, Mrs. Lee, Mr. Janes put a young man on the spot today at lunchtime.
So we wanna talk about, cause a lot of people don't know what unified basketball is, you can explain that a little bit better, but, explain the twenty-five percent, because I noticed, cause I was at the game, and I noticed a young man on the bench was calculating what, the twenty-five percent?
If it wasn't for Drew Calzall this season.
He wanted us to stay good.
So explain what he did, though, explain what you did.
So for those of you that are just joining us, and understanding what Unified Sports is, Unified Sports is to help us unite and unify people together, persons with a disability on the same team, and persons without a disability, and Special Bix Maine teamed up with the Maine Principals Association, and created a varsity sport, and they started with unified basketball, Unified Sports has been going on for a while, and we've been doing it within our Handing and Winterford Special Bix team for a number of years, but this is the inaugural year that the Maine Principals Association and Special Bix are like, yes, we can do this, and really press forward to make it happen, so, we had some rules, we didn't, we were not allowed to press in the basketball game, and then there are always three athletes and two unified partners on the court at all times, and the athletes can get as many shots as they can, and the partners are only allowed to score twenty-five percent, and we figured out right in the last few minutes of the game, that what partner could score to tie it up, to bring home the win in our championship game, and David went up for the hook shot, and brought home the gold ball for the whole team, and so it was pretty good. I really would like to say that we have won throughout this whole season, not in numbers of baskets scored more than the other team, but in how we treat each other, how we become together as a team, how we look out for each other, there was one day, I was speaking with one of the partners, and I said to him, we really, really, really need to look out for one of our teammates, he's got himself in trouble, and we need to look out for him, and he really needs this team, he needs to be a part of us, and the partner turned around, looked at me, and said, coach, we need him, and that's just a powerful statement of how much this team is unified, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. So thank you all for the support, I mean, the fact that the gym was packed at our home games was just outstanding, and I know that several other people from the board have been able to attend our games, which I'm so grateful for, and many, many people in this room have attended our games, and it's just been an outstanding experience, and we think very much.
So where's the gold ball?
Downstairs.
Downstairs, right up here. Does anybody wanna share any, any thoughts on anything like that?
I guess I'll say something, I am Will Houston, I'm senior captain's team, and I also start with, when I, when I went to sign up for this, I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, but, it, it just pulled together, I've made some great friends, it's, it's more to me than bas, more to me than just basketball, this team really shows what sports can do, not just for people, but for communities, for a whole state, I know it's brought us together, and, that's unified basketball, that's what it's supposed to be. to be. I got asked, I'm the, I got asked a question by one of the press people. They asked me how this team made me feel. And the way I answered the question was, when you walk into the gym, there is nothing but happiness. You forget every other emotion but that. And literally, this team has just made me a better person.
Graduating seniors or will they be like, will they be back to defend their title next year?
I hope David does.
We have six seniors that have just been outstanding and they are all invited back next year to help coaching to give pointers and just cheer on the team. And to help split them out.
I was talking to the executive director after the state game when we're on the court. He mentioned next year they're looking at somewhere around forty-five things. So I think we're going from like fourteen or fifteen?
I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen, so eighteen of our forty-five in one year.
It's pretty impressive. And this fine group of students that are before you have really changed the face of what unified sports can be and were really the leaders in it. Because schools have, were invited, Mr. Bissin was inviting, you know, schools to come, local schools and stuff like that, even from afar. And they were just so impressed with how our team represented themselves and they won it for their schools now too. And I think that's just a really awesome, the word ambassador was used earlier during the show. These are wonderful ambassadors for community. It's just so awesome that we have this opportunity and we thank you for that because, I mean, me and my kids are here.
Oh, thank you for coming. Appreciate all of your dedicated work. We miss you, Michelle. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lee, do you want, you want these or are these out?
Thank you.
Now we're back to our regular side audience. All right, so we will now get started with our regular business part of the evening. So we'll have the call.
Yes, Cindy, Rick, Cindy Mitchell, Rick Moore, Jason, Jason Well, and the side of excuse for the.
So next item on the agenda is the table of the minutes in the regular meeting from March eighteenth. So second, then we're in second hand. Any questions? All those in favor? Close, extensions. All right, and we've done all our adjustments to the agenda. I have the students first. Persons desiring to address the board, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the board this evening?
So then it's my report. So under there we have the election of the chair and the vice chair. So two things, I would say, I take a little personal point of privilege and just say it's been a great honor to do this work with you and I'm a little sad that my work is pulling me away from this area. And I think, a little verklempt, but the kids being here sort of solidifies for me the importance of it. So I'm not going to be your chair after today, it's my last time. So that's weird. I've been in leadership on this board for a decade and here, sitting here longer, but in leadership for almost ten years, so.
Okay, so you want the election.
So we knew elections, we need a new chair.
So we'll follow Robert's rules.
Yes.
Which nominations are not required to be second. I have ballots if you prefer to do a written ballot, if that's the direction you're involved, or if you just want to have a solo dance.
So we'll start with nominations for chair.
I nominate Niles.
Nomination for Niles, are there other nominations? All right, given, is that it?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we disperse with a written ballot for this election.
I would agree, I concur. So we will ask one person to cast one vote. So who nominated, Martha nominated, would you like to cast a vote?
I would be happy to.
Great, so congratulations.
Wait, the rest of us don't get to cast votes?
Well, we can cast, we only have one nominee, so I'm asking, I'm asking for one person to just cast his vote for the slate. Okay. Very nice. You did. So congratulations, Niles.
Thank you very much.
Now, since Niles will no longer be serving in the vice chair position, we will need a nominee for vice chair. And Martha? Eric has been nominated. Are there other nominations? John, would you like to cast the vote?
I hear by completely vote for Eric and for vice chair.
Excellent, so thank you. So congratulations. Thank you. I think I get to finish today, right?
Yes, you do.
But I would like, I would like to make a comment, though. First, to state the obvious, if other people are on board, you know the significance and the importance of a chair and a vice chair. I'm going to use the Martha Harris example because Martha went into withdrawal when she left the vice chair because.
You didn't call me every day.
Literally, Kelly and I probably talk at least two or three times a week, the dissemination of information so your chair is in the know. And it's very important as a superintendent that the chair knows the role of the chair and how that interfaces in the governance structure. If you don't have someone that appreciates that, it can be very problematic. So I really appreciate Kelly's role in the last decade. That's, that's absolutely remarkable. You had this position for ten years. So I'm just, I guess, stating the obvious to let people know, the, the operation of the board and the pivotal part for the vice chair and the chair does is very, very critical. And when you have those broken links, then you have a broken board. Ema, I'm kind of joking a little bit because you heard tonight the word climate and the word, you know, the ethos, chemistry. And I'll never forget back when we had a dysfunctional board, we were trying to establish for the first time ever that element of respect and climate and trust. And unfortunately, couldn't get that through to our board as a, as a group until we saw a change in the board. But we all know the significance of a board when you, when you do have a great working relationship that's embedded with respect, professionalism, and good, honest debate. And when you have that, you really relish that. And that can be spearheaded significantly by the effectiveness of a chair and vice chair.
So, and I would encourage all of you too, as I sort of roll out of these roles, I've had a leadership role on the statewide board and that's, I think, brought significant impact to this board as well, Martha and her role on the state board of education. So I think we grow leaders here in our teachers and our students and I, and I hope we continue to do it ourselves as well. So I'm, you know, not going far, so I'm able to keep an eye on you.
Well, and one more thing that I'd require, but it just kind of struck me in the last five days, my, my home, the home across the street from my home went up for sale on Friday afternoon. It was sold Sunday afternoon. And the people that bought it have four children and they introduced themselves to me, not knowing I was the superintendent, and indicated that they bought the home because of the Hammond school system. Ema and I met with a client today in my office talking about some business terms and he indicated that he and his wife with two preschool children moved from Bangor to Hammond in the recent months to have their children in Hammond schools. So there yet again are the stories that we hear and about the marketability and the infrastructure of having an excellent school system and the draw to the community and the value added in that for our homes that we all own in our community. So just kind of two stories that I'm sure that you've heard as well.
I just like to publicly thank you and acknowledge your dedication and hard work. I hope you're not going far.
I have a great job, it just happens to be in Southern Maine. This eight years of commuting has gotten to be a bit much. Thank you all very much. So moving on because that's enough of that. Personnel.
We have three resignations to report this evening publicly. The first one is Sharon Hastings, middle school teacher at Greensburg, who's been with us since nineteen ninety-two. Adam Knowles, teacher in public education at McGraw School. Adam, I believe, has been with us for three or four years approximately. And then also Leah Valentine Smith, took the year off with respect to a new baby. She will not be returning as well. She's been with us probably for eight and a half years, so I've accepted their resignations on your behalf. We have no nominations of transfers, so we'll go over it on report. Kelly, reading the statement this evening is Kim.
Not my glasses. So, "Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are a community support system and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and an empowering atmosphere for all students and community members."
Thank you, Kim. Presentation of the Delta Ed. So speaking about programs that have really accelerated over the last two years, Matt Tardy is our Delta Ed director, done phenomenal work and he's going to share some historical perspectives and also what's going on. So Matt, welcome.
Yeah, and I was told I have a thingy here. So I'm hoping somebody can.
While you're doing that, I'll just, I'll come, I'll go the next time in the background. So let me know when you're ready, Matt.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Fundraising report, should be very self-explanatory. Again, you can see the efforts of our people to support programs and brought in fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions on that? That's reported to you on a quarterly basis. The next item is update on the principal search here at Hammond Academy. As I indicated in my agenda notes, Kelly and Cindy are representing the board on that committee. Mariah and Olivia also representing the board from the student perspective. We have nine faculty members and we have three from administration, so we have a good-sized group. The committee will be meeting tomorrow to review the applications to determine the first round interviewees that I hopefully heard before April vacation, if we can synchronize the schedule of all the people. So that's moving forward. Any questions there? We end up six, only six. So we're hoping.
These all local? Do we have any out of state people that are applying?
We have one out of state.
I asked.
One out of state.
A parent in my office today was asking where we are and we're doing a national search, regional search, ninety-nine.
We, we advertised in the Bangor Daily News twice, that was a local. And all of our jobs are posted on what's called servingschools.com website. And that's, that's the world wide web. And we also do one on spring, is serving springs out of the Portland area. But six is not a very large number. Comparatively, we're doing a principal search in VZ for an elementary school. We have nineteen. John?
If none of the six are particularly thrilling to the committee.
Yes.
Can we readvertise?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Matter of fact, I've, I've heard, of course, you hear a lot of things, I've heard that some people who may have applied didn't apply because they were written to believe that maybe someone inside was the foregone conclusion to be the candidate. We have no internal candidates. But John, just to further elaborate on your question, I would never select a person just by selecting a person. We would readvertise and then seek out in the, in the second forum and see what that brings us. I've had a situation before where we were even unsuccessful in the second and we have an intro. So you're always thinking down the road, the what ifs. So we'll, we'll see what happens there and we'll see what the next few weeks brings. How are we doing, Matt? For the next one?
For this one.
All right. Mariah, update from the student's perspective.
As you've seen today, we have a lot of musical talent and the team had a really successful season. Other than that, last weekend, we had the Mr. Hammond Academy competition, which was a fundraiser for the senior class. And we also had a benefit dinner for Mrs. Morris on Saturday night. And originally, our quarter was supposed to end this Friday, but because of all the snow days, it's been pushed back to next Friday.
What did I say, the amount raised for Mrs. Morris? I mean, that was a, was it sixty-five hundred dollars? Is that?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
It was over sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two.
And actually, I think it was probably closer to sixty-five.
Yeah, that's great.
It was all set and done. And the Mr. Hammond Academy was about four thousand.
Nice. Okay, Ema?
Nothing further to report, that's not in the update.
So Kelly, why don't you move right along?
Ema, can your update there?
Yes.
That question from, the letter from Nick?
Winchester.
Yeah, he was questioning about the potpourri machine and stuff with the.
Yes, Mike Bissin answered his question.
Yeah, okay. It's all been.
Yep.
So while we're waiting, it is the period of time for questions of board members. Are there other questions? I'm coming and I have some guests, so I'm here.
I have two.
I do believe we're coming unless there's something else going on that crumps it, but there'll be three, potentially. Hold on, we'll get you.
And it's six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, yeah. And like I said, there's plenty of fluids in the house.
You don't need any fluids, but we all bring a potluck, something.
Yeah, I was going to make a big chicken parm, so there'll be, like a eggplant if we have any vegetarians.
But I like it.
I like it. Thank you, Matt. He's got a cooking going, wait up.
I'm a fan of gnocchi, if you want to throw that in.
Couple times a year. You might have seen some of the crepes I last week.
So good, so we've got a good crowd and so that's.
Remember, it's Good Friday.
Correct. And we'll all be behaving properly as a result. All right, so we're on committee reports and athletic. Mr. Morris is not here, so he.
I wasn't there.
But the minutes are, Karen was like.
I was there. Was that the only one?
Was that the only one here that's...
Yeah, yeah. You, you, you and I.
I'm trying to think of, was that when Pete was there?
Yeah?
Yes.
It's in your packet.
Yeah, feeling the pressure, because we did, we're careful with the crafting of those bits.
We were very careful crafting the minutes.
So I don't want to speak out of the cup.
But the minutes, especially with the dating one, is very important.
Karen, thank you very much.
Oh, yes, okay. So, we discussed and reviewed the proposed changes to the basketball classification. So, MK is proposing to make five classes, and we would be in, I believe, double A, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Double A, so which is not the largest class. And that...
A, we mean A.
We mean A, double A is the largest class, thank you. And so we are in favor of the proposed change. It would require less travel for us, and we wouldn't have to go to Lewiston anymore. It does, there, really, the only school district in this area that is strongly opposed is Bangor schools, because they are going to be only double A in the future, so there's... But anyways, that should be going forward for a vote this April at the MK meeting, and would start next year. We talked about participation fees and the possible proposal to eliminate the fifty-dollar participation fee that we currently have for athletics for season. Oops. And the committee was not in favor of eliminating the participation fee, but would rather see it targeted toward capital improvement. And I would say that might not have been a formal vote, because philosophically, I would have been in favor of eliminating the participation fee, so I think that's...
It was just discussion.
It was a discussion at this point. And then we talked a little bit about the Hamden Academy gymnasium naming rights, and we talked about the presentation from the Education Foundation recently, and talked about the importance of trying to make sure there's not duplication. And this fall, we're going to... Oh, yes, we want to recommend that the board consider approving the marketing position that's going to be in the proposed budget, and also include some philanthropy within the job description, so it's very clear that that's going to be a high priority of that particular position. And we talked about, we talked about a lot. We talked about the Bronco travel soccer. They are potentially going to lose use of the Bouchard, am I saying that right, field due to recycling center being built on the land. So the board was approached to use our fields, and we would be in favor of allowing that to happen. They understand that school programs take priority, and travel soccer would commit to paying a couple of thousand dollars per year to help maintain those fields. And so it's a good relationship builder. We have a very good relationship with Little League, and also, there's another one we spoke of too.
Yes, we have Little League and the Bronco travel basketball.
Yes.
All the basketball leagues have a very good relationship.
Right, and those have really helped us strengthen community partners, but also, they've been very generous in their donations to help support field maintenance, so we are supportive of that. And that's it, that's good.
I do want to note, I was at the VZ school committee meeting last night, and the budget committee, and they noted, if we be on the wire, they noted how they want to start what Hamden has done, and with the board, and Newburgh, with the facilities, and how the community uses facilities. And they were very, they gave us a feather in the cap that we do do that, so I think we're like a model for our community.
I have a question, it kind of is long with you. I'm all for them using it, just like you were just saying, but the two thousand dollars coming as a payment, I'd rather see it come as, like, if they have a couple of thousand dollars extra, kind of like Bronco travel basketball does, have it come in as maybe funding, and I'm funding four versus, because they're all, these people are all taxpayers. And we're already mowing the field, so there's nothing, I can't imagine there's much more cost to keep it off, we're not lining fields, I wouldn't, I mean, if we did, they would probably do it.
I would use there more donation, it wasn't a payment that we...
It's more of a donation.
For them, it's the cost that they use, they already pay for the use of the Bouchard field.
Right.
And so it's more of any kind, we want to, I believe it was more of a gift rather than a conservative fee.
Right, right, yeah. But I just think you could use some other way, you know, rather than...
Well, I don't know if Bissin actually, he probably puts it into some sort of...
I think that's a, I think that's a good discussion for the athletic committee to discuss further, and have a recommendation to the board, the use of the money.
Yeah.
You could replace that field on there, the multi-purpose.
Yeah, I think they're using, they're talking about using a lot of different facilities already.
Like the travel soccer was looking at, the multi-purpose or the grass?
They are, they're looking for both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's something that needs further discussion, especially if this proposed, this proposed budget will include, I think you guys have a copy of the budget, does include a marketing development initiative, and I think that's something that we could, you know, massage and have that individual with the athletic committee and the full board make some determination what to do with the money. I think that's good, just like what Nick Winchester put in my board update, I mean, they get four thousand dollars for scholarships, and they buy backboards, they buy cloth for us, and things of that nature. So maybe it's time to kind of...
Yeah, and that was part of the talk about the participation fees, and if we do continue to have participation fees, and the athletic committee needs to have a discussion about are those going to be redirected to a specific class.
I think it needs further discussion.
Thank you for your update. Any other questions for athletics?
Thank you, Sharon. Matt, how are we doing?
One minute.
One minute, okay.
All right. All right, and as committee, we didn't meet tonight.
It was postponed.
Okay, so we, there was no report there.
Making an action.
And are there any others that I'm missing?
Don't turn off your phones.
We had our policy meeting Tuesday, Monday night.
Monday night.
We had a really quick meeting, fortunately. I was out until 2:00 AM Tuesday morning at work finishing up some talks that were going out Tuesday morning. But we discussed policy GBN, the Family Medical Leave Act. Rick was going, we eliminated some verbiage in there, and Rick's going to check out some more, more investigative...
Okay, is that you?
That's my dog.
...that policy for us. And our policy, any day, board operational goals, we're going to do some investigation on that and see what you can do with that, so I'll bring that to the board possibly next time. We also have policy JICE, which was in your packet, student publication yearbook. We bought it for a first reading last board meeting, and we decided that we needed to, it only included the high school yearbook, so we decided that since the middle school is also a yearbook, it should be all inclusive for the high school and whatever other publication there is within a district. So we made those changes, and now we are bringing it to the board for a second reading. So we're about to move that we adopt JICE, policy JICE, in publication yearbooks.
So that's been recommended for second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? John?
I will pass over my comments with reference to the designations of these policies, and move on to something which I think I mentioned two months ago, and I will now bring up again. I've been puzzled by our usage of the terms for a reading and second reading. I recently stumbled across what I think is the precedent, it comes from the British Parliament. I would suggest, or even formally propose, that we add to our language in our agendas and our consideration of these things, that second reading should actually be called second reading and adoption, because that's what we're actually doing.
So I'll amend my motion, I need to adopt and second reading of policy JICEs to publication yearbooks.
Second amendment, but move to second. Any further questions or discussion points? All right then, all those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Thank you, John.
And so we'll make that change going forward, because it is a good, it's a good one. I think we're sitting here, and we know what we're doing, but it would be more transparent if we talked about adoption.
Well, I didn't know what we were doing for the first six months I was on the board. We didn't have the second reading, and I kept waiting for adoption of these policies, and we never got it.
Tradition.
I think Mr. Tardy's ready though. Matt Tardy is our director of adult ed. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Okay, and it's not perfect, but I think the world is, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with folks again this year to talk about the adult ed partnership that we've, gosh, is it eight years already? It's quite a few years. Wow. So a little background, about eight years ago, a group of superintendents in the region started talking about ways of collaborating, working with each other, and adult education was one of those areas that people thought made sense. And through the process, in the end, eight years ago, two school systems agreed to work together. One was SE twenty-two, and was Hamden, Winterport, and Newburgh, and the school district of Orno was the partner that came in, decided to want to work together. And I think it made sense, because both systems had very small programs with both retiring directors, and it made sense to kind of have a directory with each other to work together. And I think that's the track we took, always opening the invitation of the schools in the area if they wanted to join with us along the way. We saw over the few years, the first year we were together, we saw about seven hundred registrations or so, people who took part in our programs, and about four or five years later, we grew up to about oh eighteen, nineteen hundred people that were doing, participating in our programs, and it's been very successful. I think it's an example of where schools can collaborate without being forced to, and I think that's what we've shown we can do with this program. Last year, RSU thirty-four, which is Old Town, came in in terms of working with us and hired me as their director, and they brought with them Bradley Alton, Old Town, into the mix. And as you know, the Orno school system, the RSU there dissolved, and I still, even though on the way out the door, VZ and Glenburn still agreed to work with us in adult education, and I met with folks from Milford and Green Bush and the Career Center, Indian Island, and so they've all joined this collaborative effort in terms of providing adult education services to people in the community. So it's become a pretty vast network now of, you know, small towns and small school systems working together. I passed, I developed this last year, and I do it again in June or July, we'll give you a sense of the program. We have three anchors essentially. We have an office in Hamden, we have one in Old Town, we have one in Orno. And I service the director for all three, and each of them has a site coordinator, a part-time person, and each side who really does a lot of the day-to-day work for us there. And one of the things I, when Old Town came in last year, what it allowed me to do was to develop this website, and I want to show it to you. Let me see if I mess this up. Prom to do. You can't see quite the top, but what it does is it has, I wanted to create a website that people would be drawn to, so they would be sent direct to Hamden, or Old Town, or to Orno offerings. And so this is the Riverside Adult Ed Partnership, I bought the name, www is ours, mine actually. And what we've done recently here is we have color-coded our different offerings. So this is the, you know, so folks in Milford, and Green Bush, and VZ, they have agreed on their school sites to link adult education, it takes everybody to this site. And once they're here, then people can go through wherever they want to go through. And for example, if you wanted to register online, so here's the purple, it is purple, you could download the PDF course, copy of our courses we offer in Hamden, or you could go right to the online registry, which is, which is something that we've been using now for a couple of years. What it does is it allows people to register and pay for classes online. What we're seeing, and this is our page, and it's kind of crooked, but you can search for courses here if you want, and pay for them online. What we're finding is about, on the Hamden site, about a third of our registrations are coming from the online site now. Once people get to a portal, they bookmark that page, and they get a little password, and they just, they're in. And I think that's really been exciting, and it's also allowed us to reach further, because we can go essentially any place that, we'll get people from Skowhegan, or from Bangor, from, you know, Herman, or whatever, find us on this website, and they register our courses that way. And so that's exciting. So a lot of our courses, when we first started eight years ago, the focus was mainly enrichment courses, which are valuable, it's the fitness, it's the cooking, those kinds of things. And again, those are valuable, because I've always said they connect your citizens with the school system. Seventy percent of people who take adult education classes don't have children in the schools, but they are, about a hundred percent of them are taxpayers. And so many of these, for many of these adults, their one connection to your school might be that cooking class they took, you know, at Hamden Academy one time. And I, the superintendents I've had the pleasure of working with have all recognized the value of having citizens in their schools, and I'm appreciative for that. So again, it's fitness courses, it's pottery, arts and crafts, first aid CPR classes. This is a cooking class we did, and again, we took advantage of the facility at the academy here. That's a big, we have people who want to teach in there because of their home economics room, how great it is. And this is an example of something I believe in strongly, is we run a lot of programming for families, whether it's enrichment, whether it's literacy, anytime you've got adults and kids doing positive things together, I think it's a positive thing. And this is something we ran a couple of months ago, a cooking class in your home ec room. This is also a site too that we have access to now, it's called End2Go, and what that site does, I'm not going to get out because it's, I'll lose the problem again, but we have a connection to this company called End2Go, which offers, you know, five hundred enrichment times of courses online. Their education courses for teachers, they are people who want to do Excel two thousand thirteen, it's their self-paced courses, they are teacher-led, and like I said, we probably have nearly five hundred available to people. I just recently sold about two thousand dollars worth of these courses to our friends at Job Corps in Bangor, who want to use it for a professional development purpose for their staff, and they've been working with them. The heart and soul of any adult ed program is really the academic stuff they offer, and that's the biggest change in eight years here on this side of the program, is whereas the focus is on enrichment, basically, there's a change in culture going on, and we're seeing more opportunities and more need for academic programming here. We offer some courses that some high school students use for recovery purposes. We offer an adult ed high school diploma through Orno, Orno School System does offer that. So a couple of years ago, we had a young girl from Winterport who was lacking a credit for her high school diploma, had a baby. She took two courses, one in Hamden English class, and one online, and she got her high school diploma through Orno School System. Adult transitions are people who come to us, they've got a high school diploma, but they might need algebra to get into college, or they might need refresher work on the AccuPlace for testing that they have to take. And that's, we offer those opportunities here as well. I had a young lady from Hamden last night, actually, who came here to meet with me, they have twenty years, a stay-at-home mom, who's now having a change of life opportunity, she's going to college scared to death, has to take AccuPlace for testing, the college told her, she's come to us, and we're going to meet with her again next Tuesday and start helping her along that way. And we also offer college transitions. This is, this is a specialized program for people who want to go to college, and it involves a college readiness course and other work as well. And we've been able to get some grant money this year through the state for college transitions that we're using effectively. We offer a college readiness class in Old Town, we also offer a college readiness class that we're co-sponsoring with Bangor Adult Ed and Brewer that's running there, and we've sent a couple of people from Hamden over there to take that course. And then we offer the HICE, which I put the GED there, because people may not recognize HICE, but that's the new GED, and as of January last year, we found... And as of January last year, we finally here got a chance to offer the HICEP in Hampden. And so Old Town has a site for testing, Hampden has a site for testing, we do it here Tuesday nights. And last year in Hampden, we had two people pass their HICEP, which allowed them to move on in life. And we had about four or five people last year come in the door looking for HICEP, GED supports, information. This year, we're at about 20 people who've come to the door. And we're going to offer, I think we're going to probably have about 10, 10 or 12 graduate this year from the Hampden side with their HICEP. The stories are incredible. We have one lady who was a Winterport girl, worked at a mill for many years, which closed recently, and needed something else. And so she worked with us for a few months, she got her HICEP with us, and now she's been accepted at college and is going there. We have another lady from Newburgh who brought her granddaughter in, adult granddaughter in, last year to get her help for HICEP. And the granddaughter left, but the grandmother stayed. She didn't have a diploma either. And she took her last test last night with us, and she's 65, 66, and she's going to pass with no problem. And they're going to be able to march, we have a, on May 14th, Thursday night at 6 o'clock in Old Town High School, we have a joint graduation ceremony. And this year, I suspect, last year we had about 13 people who opted to march, cap and gown, guest speakers, refreshments, music, everything. Families are all there, and probably 150 people in the cafeteria there, because 13 people bring family members with them, right? And this year, we'll probably have about 10, that's the guess, but I suspect that of those 10, five or six are from Hampden this year. And they've, I've gotten confirmation from five people already that they want to march, march cap and gown in Old Town on the May 14th. And that's exciting stuff. And that grandmother will be marching, cap and gown. We offer formal classes like biology classes. This is an Old Town course. That's a college readiness class in Old Town that we offer. We offer, we started this year for the first time in academic Latin night here in Tuesday nights. And Brad Beach, who teaches at the high school, fantastic guy, he serves as a tester and a tutor. And I was here last night helping him out. We had about six or seven people doing different things. It's kind of chaotic, really. But we have that option, and he's fantastic with it. So that is new, and I'm thinking next year of probably expanding to two nights because of the man here. And we run that out of the Reesbrook Library in Tuesday nights. We also have access to something online called Odysseyware. It's kind of like Plato, if you're familiar with Plato, and these are just some of the courses that we bought into. This allows some of our diploma people, STEM people, to do some work at home. It's an online program. And there is some HICEP prep work here as well. But Hampden School Systems bought in, Old Town's bought in, Orno's used it for a few years now. But this is something, again, we have to offer folks, you know, for adult education purposes, they just can't get into a formal class. And this is going to allow them, offering to do that. And we have a lot of people here taking advantage of that. It's called Odysseyware. We also offer a lot of, some vocational programming. If you look at our flyer, that's the biggest change is we've offered CNA courses now for about, since I've been here. We've probably helped over 200 people earn their CNA certificates. We offer a class to Orno Commons. We always have one or two people from this side, from Winterport, Hampden, that take that. It's a life-changing, career-changing opportunity for them, and that's an exciting part of what we do. We're offering more vocational trainings. Part of that is through a partnership with our friends from OHI, who offer trainings. They offer trainings like CRM A trainings and PSS trainings. And what we do is we partner with them to refer people to those courses, and we help people, you know, gain those kind of experiences. We have, we are in partnership with a company called Cadence Curriculum International that offers some online healthcare trainings. For example, if you want to take a pharmacy tech course, you can take the course online. And what they do is they partner you with a Rite Aid in Bangor to do your clinical piece. We had someone from Winterport do the pharmacy tech program last year. A woman from Green Bush did medical coding billing through this program with us this year. So a lot of opportunities that we're providing with people, for people, I think, now to move on in a different direction. And one of my personal passions is family literacy. You know, I'm a firm believer in trying to get folks, kids, and parents together doing, working with literacy. And every chance we get, we try to partner with programs. We have a fantastic relationship with some of the libraries in the area. This is an Orno library activity we did. We had a great day out here in Hampden a couple of months ago. We had access to your wonderful theater. And we did a one-day children's theater workshop with the local Hampden players, which is a group of high school students who do summer theatrical work with Rob Kisten and Jen Guere. And so it was a one-day theater workshop where 15 kids came in the morning, and we partnered the library. And they worked with high school students who were the directors. And when the parents came to pick the kids up in the afternoon, they got to see three performances that afternoon. It's really, you know, and the kids got to use your stage, and they got to use the technology. It was very powerful stuff. And this group of Hampden performers plan on coming to Orno this summer, doing a one-day thing out there for Orno kids too. They really loved it. Again, theatrical, we combine music, food, art with literacy. This is exciting because for years I've been trying to get into University Park. I know if you're familiar with that, that's where a lot of the university students, foreign students are housed. And I was trying to get into the ESL and English conversation, no charge, nothing, but I kept hitting walls of bureaucracy along the way. And so I started to partner with a group on campus there called the Literacy Friends. And it's through that organization that I was able to get in to University Park. And this is an example. We did a Cooking Matters program there, which is six weeks of healthy eating habits and tips. And people who came to that would come away with that with food they could take home with them, free of charge. We're also there for conversation groups now. We're running our third conversation group at University Park through this organization we've been able to work with. So always have to have goals. One, we really desperately need to improve our marketing. I have a lead on getting a graduate student as an intern this year from University of Maine. I'm looking for somebody who has an interest in education, and by nature of his or her age, has good social media skills. Or someone who's in communications and marketing that can really help our program because we're limited by manpower hours. You know, I just, we have somebody here in the office 20 hours a week, and I'm here about, unpaid 10 hours a week. So it limits on what you can do in terms of creating programming and marketing your programs out there. We're going to improve our data collection process. The state is being, excuse me, more demanding of data. And we're going to improve how we do that. We have finally somebody who is well-trained in it now that I can rely on. And again, an example of the collaboration, she works for Old Town in the guidance office there. And so she needed hours to fill out her 40-hour work week. She's doing this for us, and Old Town, Orno, and Hampden are sharing her for the most part, and that's really helpful. We're going to continue to seek grant money opportunities. I mentioned college transitions. I'm applying this year. I'm also in touch with an organization that's looking to bring technology into adult education programs throughout the state. They drove up from Portland to meet with me a couple of weeks ago. The goal would be to have, in every site, Hampden, Orno, Old Town, in Indian Island even, television cameras where people can take courses, distant courses. So I could have a teacher in Old Town teaching algebra, and I could have two people in Hampden who are taking the course from there, and one person in Orno joining in as well. And that's going to create a lot of, I think, opportunities for us. Instead of running a class with three people in one town and four people in another town, you can run one in seven people that way. So that's exciting. I'm hoping we'll be able to do that. Always looking for family literacy opportunities to partner with organizations. You know, we need to find these folks. I saw a study a couple of years ago that said that 10 to 12% of North County residents don't have diploma, adults. They're out there. You have them in Hampden, you have them in Newburgh, you have them in Winterport, you have them in Frankfort, you have them in Orno. We really need to reach these people, and that's one of my goals, is to find these folks, you know, and we're starting. I'm seeing a great change here in the culture. We're getting, like I said, we went from five or six last year to the door to 20 this year. I think more people know about that. I want more access for our folks to vocational trainings, and I've talked with Rick about trying to partner with UTC more so that they can offer more things on a regional level that are of interest and use to all of us in the evenings, and we can promote as well. And working with them to do that is a goal of mine. And again, just looking to build partnerships. The Hampden Rec folks have been a great partner this year for us. We're working very well with them now. Job Corps has been an interesting partner. They've come to us, and we're working with them on some projects. And again, it's just, you can need to work hard.
People have questions about that? You probably have some quicknesses or haves that Matt probably talked about.
Yeah, we've had a rough, we've had a rough winter though. Overall, our numbers overall, a little bit down, it's been a lousy winter. It's across the board, but I think, no, I'm still excited.
You involved, there's like, seems to be a national ad campaign going on right now. Every time I turn the TV on, I see an ad, you know, somebody walking up to fill out an application, and they pause, and everybody's like, turn around, look, and the baby spins out there, bank, and looks at them like, "Do you have it?" It's like, move on. Is that something you guys are...
Well, we've been working, Literacy Volunteers of Bangor has a PSA, an act that's very similar to that out. And we're very good partners of Literacy Volunteers of Bangor. We have, they have referred folks to us. One of the ladies who's marching May 14th is a Bangor woman who simply didn't want to go to the Learning Center there because it's too crowded. You know, she just wanted that more personal kind of work. And so Literacy Volunteers found her, a tutor, worked with her for a year. The tutor actually drove her out here. I went out to meet her a couple of times as well. The tutor drove her out here for her testing, and she passed her HICEP. And she's going to be graduating March 14th with us, and speaking as well at the graduation ceremony. She's a great story. They are a great partner. They have, I had a gentleman last night who's been working with us, who they're matching their tutor with right now. Free, you know, just doing the same kind of work, and they are just a fantastic partner, yeah.
Matt's done a great job in eight years. I think back eight years ago when we had the traditional classes, which was a good time, we had 300 registration. And all of a sudden, over eight years with the collaboration and all the school systems coming together is really truly remarkable. I think your goals, I think, I'm really excited about the vocational one. I think that has great opportunity there, Matt.
Yeah, I hope Hampden doesn't mess it up for us because you might not be rural enough. But I'm working on it.
We've heard that before.
But one of the things...
Focus on Newburgh and Winterport.
Oh, yeah. But that's one of the cases where Bangor wants in on that too, I think, but they do, they have to work through us. It's one of those twists of things now, yeah.
But go back to the 70% figure Matt mentioned. 70% of those people in the classes do not have kids in school, but that's the connection they have to the school.
And again, I do appreciate, and we have great support. We do most of our work in Reesbrook in the academy. Your principals have been great. Thank you, Rui. Your custodians have been fantastic to work with us, you know. You know, I'm very happy to be here, and I'm very happy with what we've been doing. And if you get the chance to come out to Old Town, May 14th at 6 o'clock, I think you'd be impressed with what goes on there. And it's life-changing stuff for those folks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience with the technology.
That's okay. We got through a couple of...
I'm just glad I didn't have to follow all the chanting you had earlier. You're like the guys who followed the Beatles in 1964 in Sullivan. Like, why you follow that?
Okay, so we're up to Old Business.
Yes, we are.
Okay, discuss and act on selection of WBRC for services associated with cycling and pre-concept design for the Weatherby, Weatherby, Weatherby-McGraw complex.
We'd like to hear more about that. I'm going to look down, mouse pop.
And actually, we've talked about it a little bit already, if you remember at the last meeting. Jason spoke about our building committee meeting, and it's Jason, myself, Emil, Martha, you were not at that one. But we had representatives from WBRC speaking to us.
And she's in the audience tonight, Jen Richard?
All right, I didn't see that. Talking, showing some great photos of the land, particularly around Weatherby and McGraw. And the realization that we've been looking at for a while, that we need to begin planning on site use, those building uses in the future. Looking at our numbers, looking to age those buildings, the use of those buildings, and as well as the site planning and the traffic issues that we know are big for that building. So the committee met with WBRC and recommended that we pursue signing on with them to help us through that preliminary process in the first part of the site phase, research and development. And so we, tonight, we would make a motion that the board selects WBRC for their professional services associated with that site planning and the pre-concept design for the Weatherby-McGraw complex, as well as the district office, the bus office, and vehicle patterns associated with that plot as well.
I have a question. Just a quick assignment. Was this budgeted, and was there a request for proposals sent out, or how did we select the...
Yep, it is budgeted. It's in this year's budget as a matter of fact, and it's also in next year's budget. Request for proposal, we're not required to do that in a pre-concept. If it comes up to an construction project though, we are required to do that. The reason, it's a very good question. The reason why WBRC is selected, today is a good example. We met with a real estate broker today about our central office, needs a site plan, needs some surveys. WBRC already has it because they did it prior, and they have, they're close by, and that, they have support. They have supported us in the past in regards to this complex, and they're very aware, they're very aware of the complex. They've already done a traffic study on it. So it makes common sense to go with them, but if it gets into a full-blown construction project, we would have to, we would have to interview for that.
So we need a motion?
Yes, a motion in a second.
I would like to make a motion that we select WBRC for professional services associated with the site planning and pre-concept design for the Weatherby-McGraw complex, as well as the district office and the transportation building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just hypothetically, what exactly are the planned proposals or even ideas with reference to the central office?
That's the purpose of what we're pursuing, and we'll have a menu of options, what that may look like. We met today, starting, looking for maybe some possible tenants for next year. Go slow and see what that does for us. Maybe an option to sell the building.
Are we currently occupying the old fire station?
We are leasing, we just signed the lease with the town of Hampden for a 10-year lease.
We're using that for equipment storage?
Equipment storage and maintenance storage. That's another possibility where...
In some past years, we've had an alternative education something in an upcoming building.
That's in the next building, that's in the Masonic Hall. But that's now in the high school.
That's now in the high school.
It's now in the high school.
Correct.
On the first floor at the...
Remember, there was a big planning push about when they did not having them actually be part of the high school. They wanted their own separate entrance, which I think they got, but I mean, it's more part of the program. So that was part of the build here. So I think that they're looking at what to do about that spot of land for the superintendent's office. It's probably more about the traffic, John, than about anything else about...
What about the traffic?
Yeah, you know, we could relocate Rick and Emil, probably, you know, make a bigger space, you know. Something's got to be done there about the bottleneck eventually. So it's just, this is the planning. And we'll get lots and lots of choices.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what this process is about.
Is it by fall?
Fall, we're going to have preliminary, yeah, fall is...
Fall is here.
To the board, to the full board. Hopefully, summertime, probably to the building committee.
Other questions? All right, all those in favor, motion? Matt, it's Janice. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move forward now.
Update of the Tibbetts Request Committee.
Yes, Mariah is going to give us an overview. Mrs. Dealey also is going to give me some. Mariah?
We've been a couple of times, and so we drafted mission statements and a couple guidelines. And so we also have two proposals. One is an E-book, and there's like a makeshift operation station. We're not sure of the name yet. But for the eBooks right now, we have the option for students to take out eBooks, but it's not very popular, and people don't really know about it. And so we're thinking that we want to incorporate two vendors. It's called Overdrive and Follet, which would total like $2,000. And so that would allow students to take out nonfiction books, fiction, like have a lot of selection. And everyone could have them on their devices, and we want to like push that to... And we want to like push that to the students and let them know that that's available and that they could have it on all their devices. And so the other part is the MakeSpace proposal. So we're thinking having like a space in the library where students can pursue independent projects and have like monthly themes and experts brought in to facilitate. And so it could be something like coding or photography or anything arts and crafts like. But just having a space where students can come in during study halls or before and after school, where they can pursue whatever interests they might not have the time for during the regular school day. And so we would have the theme months, and then eventually, maybe in future years, students would have more input on the themes and based on materials and volunteers coming in, and have a total $10,000, we're thinking. And then the other part, we discussed having a curriculum needs fund. So teachers could request additional materials. They could send in like an application, and the committee could review to see if we would support their additional materials.
Okay. Mrs. Yeeley, you want to highlight the plaque conversation that we had?
Yes, I did want, I don't have it in front of me. We also developed a mission statement?
Yes, everyone.
Did everyone get that?
Yes, they did, yeah.
So we would like to have the district purchase, not purchase using the Tibbetts' bequest money, but the district purchase, a brass plaque to put here in the library. And we selected a space, when you first walk in, there's a fairly blank wall. Eventually, you get to a cork board, but right when you walk in, right in front of you, thanking the Tibbetts' family for supporting Curriculum and Hampden Academy. And so we're coming up with that language. And Mr. Raymond is giving us a quote on what that brass plaque would look like.
As a matter of fact, WBRC is helping us find a company to do that for us and get a price for us, because they did the same thing for us in the foyer area, on the dedication plaque, so.
So just a reminder, this is a $300,000 bequest that we're talking about. And I talked with our accountant today. We're probably going to be pushing by fall, probably a total of $375,000, because we're gonna have another distribution in the spring, another distribution in the summer.
The plan is to implement this initial plan over one to three years and see the feedback that we get from students and from faculty members, and then start growing that. But we didn't just want to like willy-nilly try to spend $100,000. Wanted to be pretty conservative to start.
I have a question about those funds. Can we invest those funds?
Yes, they are invested. They're a normal point, like a 1-2 or something like, yeah. But they are in the account.
They are.
I think on sweep account, they're in the account. Are there other options for?
Well, we're pretty limited in what we can invest in. It's taxpayers, well, it's money, but it's taxpayers' money. We're very limited. The risk, I guess is the word, the high risk of lean and the moderate risk, or even low risk. It's really low risk that we can do things with that.
Is there any way you can take the bequested money and turn it into an endowment? As opposed to, you know, feeling like it's got to be spent? Is there verbiage in the will and testament how the money was bequested?
That's a good question.
So you're not feeling like, oh, we got to come up with what is spent on? Well, start an endowment, like the Educate, not give it to the education fund, but have a library endowment. So maybe some point, the librarian's position would be funded from the endowment as opposed to budget.
So, you know, we've talked about an endowment for the library when we first moved here, and actually a number of other spaces. And that's one of the reasons why we said that the plaque would be inside the library, because if we put it outside the library, and then we got an endowment for the library, probably it would have to be up over the entryway. One of the things about this bequest is, my understanding, it's intended to supplement, not supplant, the district's obligation. So I don't think that we could ever use it to cut the librarian at the high school and spend that money to pay the librarians.
But I mean, investing it and then spending the interest that it's generating, because I mean, to start with a six-figure endowment.
That would be wonderful if that could happen.
We'll follow up on that, that's a good point.
Maybe we don't have to keep it in our accounts. I don't know.
Because it isn't taxpayer money. Because you're limited what you can do with taxpayer money, but where it's requested, I mean.
And I don't know what the language, but that's a good question.
Well, I have it here, so we can. Thank you, Mariah, good job.
And sort of going along that same line, I think you might be able to get 10 times the interest you're currently getting. It looks like a fully protected FDIC insured account on the online bank.
We'll research it.
And mind you, even 10 times the interest you're getting is not exactly a lot of benefit, but it is 10 times worth than you're getting.
Pathetic.
All right, so thank you for those updates. Anything else on that we'll be carrying back on for the future work? All right, new business, discuss an act in the first reading of the school calendar.
So this calendar has been reviewed at all of our faculty meetings. I've discussed it with the association. So this is presented to you tonight as a first reading. It's pretty standard. You can see the purple in August is the MPA, fall season starts. The purple, darker purple, is the new teacher orientation. The management day is on the 27th, and in-service day on the 28th. And teacher prep day on the 31st, and K through 9 on September 1. We've eliminated the early dismissal days. We're focusing more on the whole days now with in-service. Pretty straightforward. You see the Christmas vacation, we have two days of school there. Likewise, similar explanation, Thanksgiving, two days there. And three days built in for store, which leads us to June 15th as the final student day with the three days included. Any questions or comments? Tony?
Did it have to go through negotiations with the teacher association to build in what the state approved extending the day an hour? Or five days equals make-up snow day? Does that, did that have to go?
That has to go through legislation, but you don't have to negotiate that. That's a bill before the legislature.
Oh, it hasn't been approved?
No. So if the legislature gives approval, then this board can come back and discuss it as an option, but we don't have to negotiate it.
Okay. Because even though it extends their day.
Exactly. So I'm looking, I'm anxious to see what's gonna happen with that bill. But I thought you were gonna get on this direction. Even though we seek input from the association and so on, you don't negotiate a calendar. The board's prerogative is to establish the calendar. We seek the input, obviously, of faculty. Any other questions?
Just to John's point, this is a first reading.
This is a first reading.
So we will be bringing it back for adoption.
Second reading and adoption at the next meeting. So if you do have people, and we have had people calling the office, inquiring about what the calendar, you can let them know that the board has looked at this for a first reading. So it's probably going to be a pretty good opportunity that this will be solidified and adopted at our next meeting. Because people are planning vacations, aren't they?
The question, we always have the question about how this aligns with the curriculum for UTC.
Yes, four days, Mrs. Yeeley, right?
Yes, this is the best we've done.
This is the best we've done.
Unless they change, what happened last year was we set it, and we thought we were at four days. And then UTC changed their calendar after we had, we'd come up with ours. But this is great.
So we're doing very well.
And the elimination, or almost elimination of half-days, is very beneficial to our PM UTC students.
How many students do we have in our district that go to UTC?
Around 80.
So 80 students out of 2,200 are dictating the school calendar year?
Well, actually, it's a state law.
A state law.
That requires that our calendar not deviate from the regional vocational high schools' calendar by more than five days.
As state law, Tony.
Actually, a bit of clarification, it's far more complex than that. It's that there can't be more than five days of deviation between UTC and all of the sending schools.
Now, the same explanation, though, there's a bill in the legislature to change that as well.
I mean, pardon the expression, but it seems like the tail is wagging off to have such few students. But I didn't realize there was a state mandate coming down, that that's what.
But I also want to accentuate the half-day that Mrs. Yeeley mentioned. By eliminating the half-day, then those children are given now to go to UTC. Otherwise, they lose that learning opportunity.
I think this year, maybe they missed 10 days, the PM students, because of the half-days that we had. So I understand what you're saying about 80.
I didn't realize that's where the direction came from, that it was at the state level. I just thought it was like, well, one random school is picking. I didn't realize that was. Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll bring that back next.
Great, and I did hear, just on an unrelated note, that the Portland School Committee voted to add 20 minutes to each of their school days.
They did.
The committee actually just.
They did.
Academic or teacher?
It didn't, it did not say. But I would assume both.
Well, because that was one of the debates that we were having, whether it was going to be administrative time or student time.
So we'll be able to see from them, right? So they are doing an attempt to see how they roll it out. But the benefit may or may not be. Okay, that's it. So, meeting dates.
Okay, draw your attention, first of all, in Cindy's absence, I'll speak for her, that hopefully many of you can make the budget committee tomorrow evening right here at 6 o'clock. Obviously, Tony's got together Friday. We do need to have a policy committee meet. So what's our desire there?
Next week, the sixth, Monday.
Give me a little bit of time to work on those two policies. And I did find a special ed policy, by the way, Martha and Eric and Karen. Actually, we didn't find the policies.
Do you want to go a little further out?
Yeah, let's go a little bit further out. What about the 13th? I can do the 13th, yep. Want to do 13? Okay, 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock, 13. I think, other than that, we're all set.
Ed's got their standard meeting?
Yes, they do.
So we're good? No other committees?
Why, a pre-meeting to death next couple weeks.
Budget will be all consumed. And negotiations have their meeting schedule.
Next week. The eighth, of course, a special meeting next week.
So we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss evaluations of the general school. Does anyone read that, please?
I mostly enter executive session to discuss the evaluation of the student joining of schools according to one MRSA Section 4056A.
The motion is submitted, all in favor? We'll take a break. Break.